This meeting. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 1st, 2020 City Council Meeting. And we are all calling in remotely. So, uh, City Council members, what I'm going to do is when we have, uh, an agenda item come up, or in this case, the, uh, the, uh, consent agenda, um, uh, when, uh, I call for the, uh, the questions, I will go in order of, of everyone. So anyone who wants to pull an agenda item off will get a chance. I will call out your name if you'd like to do that. So that way, we won't miss anyone who would like to speak. Uh, so that's kind of the basic ground rules, and we'll just see how it goes. Okay, we just returned from closed session. And at this time, there is no reportable action. And Director Maloney, City Clerk, uh, is there anyone who has, have you received any comments by email on the closed session?
No, I have received no email comments.
Thank you, Director Maloney. And that was a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four subdivision D of the Government Code, Section 54956.9, one potential case. And again, to report out, there is no reportable action. Okay, so now we're going to go on to the regular body of the meeting. And it is exactly 5:02, and I'd like to call this meeting to order of the City Council meeting of April 1st, 2020. And Commander Rayner, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Commander Rayner. Now I'm going to go to roll call. Director Maloney.
Fariah?
Here.
Johnson Santos?
Here.
Jones?
Present.
Lewis? Councilmember Lewis, are you present?
Here.
Volalta?
I'm present, I'm present.
Thank you, thank you. Volalta?
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum. Uh, all five members are present at this time. Okay, I'm going to go on to item five now, consideration of approval of agenda. And do I have a motion? Please identify your name.
Tom, I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Veronica, second.
It's been motioned by Fariah and seconded by Johnson Santos for the approval of the agenda. And roll call vote, Director Maloney.
Fariah?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Volalta?
Yes. Carried by unanimous consent. Director Maloney, would you please, as City Clerk, report to, uh, uh, our public and to us, which staff members are present?
Okay, on the teleconference, you have Alex Tarazas, City Manager, William Vaughn, City Attorney, Stacy Elms, the Community and Economic Development Director, Mark Faison, the Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mason Hurley, the Fire Chief, Ray Rayna, the Police Commander, and, um, Sonia Williams, the Finance Director, and myself, Lucy Maloney, the City Clerk and the Human Resources Director, are in the council chambers.
Thank you so much, Director Maloney. Okay, we are now going to go to the public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda added, uh, actions, uh, items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Uh, Director Maloney, is there, have you received any comments by email?
No, I have not.
Thank you. At this time, I will now close the public forum, and I will go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. So what I'm going to do, Council members, I'm going to have Director Maloney read the items on the consent agenda. Then I am going to go down the list of City Council members to ask if there's any item you would like removed before we approve the consent agenda, uh, either a partial consent agenda or the full. Director Maloney, would you please read the items? Tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 220949 through 221169 in the amount of $1,096,636.52. Minutes for the March 13th, 2020 adjourned City Council meeting. Minutes for the March 18th, 2020 City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6191, approving the public safety dispatcher, community services officer recruitment incentive pilot program and a revised budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year as it pertains to Measure H funds associated with the program. City Council Resolution Number 6192, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2020-2021 full-size sport utility vehicle. Authorize the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to issue the purchase order to Santos Ford in the amount of $42,099. City Council Resolution Number 6193, approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account proposed project lists for fiscal year 2020-2021. City Council Resolution Number 6194, accepting the congestion mitigation air quality construction in field sidewalk improvements, federal aid project number CML-5160027 as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number 6195, approving and adopting final track map number 2015-01 South Point at Regency Park Phase 1 and accompanying subdivision improvement agreement Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6196, approving and adopting final track map number 2015-01 South Point at Regency Park Phase 2 and accompanying subdivision improvement agreement Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6197, approving and adopting final track map number 2015-01 South Point at Regency Park Phase 3 and accompanying subdivision improvement agreement Stonefield Home, Inc. Ordinance Number 1181, adding Article 46 to Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to reasonable accommodation. And on this item, you'll be waiving the further reading and adopting the ordinance as submitted. Ordinance Number 1182, amending Title IX, Chapter 3 of the Los Banos Municipal Code regarding emergency shelters, supportive, and transitional housing and single-room occupancy units. And this ordinance, you'll be waiving the further reading and adopting the ordinance as submitted. And all the other items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Director Maloney. Now, I'm going to go down the list of City Council members. And if you have a, an item to remove or would like more discussion on it, uh, please let me know at that time. And I'm going to start with, uh, Mrs. Santos. Do you have anything you'd like to remove?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Fariah?
No.
Okay, and I have nothing I would like to remove. So at this time, we have, uh, the, the, except for K and L, this is a, uh, an, a motion to approve. And if someone would, uh, state in their motion that K and L were waiving further reading and the adoption of the ordinance as submitted for K and L, I would greatly appreciate it, and then motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda. Who would like to do that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take the motion.
All right, go ahead, Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted with the re, and help me if I'm saying this incorrectly, with the removal of K and L for accepting the adoption of the ordinance without, without further, um...
Reading.
I'm not sure what else is called. Without further reading, thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, this is, uh... Excuse me, this is William Vaughn. You're just simply approving K and L. I think the mayor just wanted you to highlight the fact that you're waiving the reading and adopting the ordinance by approving the consent agenda.
That's correct.
You're not removing those from the consent agenda. You're approving them, uh, by approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, then I'll restate my motion. Um, I'd like to approve the consent agenda as submitted, and items K and L will be, uh, um, also included in the agenda and waiving any further reading. Am I correct on that, Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, good enough.
Okay, thank you.
Perf, perfect. Okay, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Go ahead. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'll second that.
I have a motion. Thank you. I have a motion by Lewis and a second by Jones approving the, uh, consent agenda as stated and can include, with the inclusion of K and L to waive the further reading and adopt the or, ordinance for K and adopt the ordinance of L and waive the further reading. All in favor? And I'll...
Aye.
...go off the eight. Oh, wait, whoa, 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 whoa. One, I'm sorry. Director Maloney, would you take a roll call vote?
Fariah?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Volalta?
Yes. Okay, ca, motion carried five to zero. Let's go on to item eight, advisement of public notices. And according to our agenda, there is no report. Now let's go on to item nine, City Managers' Report, COVID-19 Status Update. Direct, uh, City Manager Tarazas?
Yep, I'm here, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, um, the, the, the city's, uh, been highly engaged in the, the COVID-19 pandemic response effort. Um, and you'll recall, at the last council meeting, uh, the council did, uh, ratify the declaration of a local emergency. So, uh, we are, um, under that declaration of a local emergency at this point, as ratified by the City Council. Um, our Emergency Operations Center, uh, is up and operational. Uh, that, that effort is being led by, uh, Fire Chief Mason Hurley. Um, and the deputy in the EOC is, uh, uh, Police Chief Gary Breezy. Um, at this point, we're meeting on a daily basis, um, and coordinating with the Merced County Emergency Operations Center uh, on the, the county effort, uh, just to make sure we're, we're being coordinated and in coordination with that, uh, county, county response effort. We're also, uh, engaged with other, uh, community stakeholders, uh, including Sutter Health. Uh, we're work, working very closely with Sutter Health, uh, to identify what's called an alternate care site. Uh, that would, that would be a site, uh, where patients, at le, at least at this point, non-COVID patients, uh, would go to seek healthcare. Uh, so we're working really closely with the hospital, uh, to plan for that and identify a site. Um, on our regular EOC calls, uh, we do have, uh, Dr. Marshall from the school district. Uh, so we're maintaining, uh, close communication with the district. Uh, we are, uh, in contact with our local business community, um, coordinating and pushing out information regarding shopping hours, uh, regarding, uh, designated hours for, for seniors to shop in stores. Uh, we've posted information to the PD Facebook site, uh, regarding those designated hours for seniors. So, um, that would be a good source if folks are looking for those hours. Um, we're also coordinated with, uh, Bethel, Bethel Church. Uh, they've been designated as a donation site. Um, there's a flyer, again, a flyer on the face, PD Facebook page, uh, for folks who are interested in donating to the effort. Um, and Bethel Church has been designated as that, that site where those donations can go. Um, just as a reminder to the council and anyone that might be listening, uh, we've closed City Hall to the public, uh, although we, we are still, um, in, in the background working, uh, trying to maintain, uh, those essential public services to the community. Uh, but at, at least for, for the immediate future and the, the future that is... Hello? City Hall is closed, uh, Community Center is closed. We have canceled, uh, events at the Community Center canceled, unfortunately. Fortunately. Our recreation programs. Uh, we've actually also, we've also closed off public access to the police lobby, fire stations, uh, public works facilities. Um, and as of yesterday, uh, we have closed city parks. Um, wha, what we were finding was folks were continuing to use those parks. Use the play structures. So, uh, again, as of yesterday, we have closed those city parks. We are, we are keeping, uh, the, the trails o, excuse me, open, uh, for use, uh, by the community. Um, and that is consistent with both the governor's, uh, order uh, and the, uh, Merced County Public Health Officer's order. We do, uh, encourage folks to, um, practice social distancing, uh, if you are using those trails. Um, but at this point, those trails are, are open for the community's use. Um, we are, uh, very much engaged in public education. Um, our PR, PIO, who is Commander Headen, uh, has been very actively posting information to the Police Department's, uh, Facebook page. Uh, you will begin to see, uh, additional message, messaging, uh, on that Facebook page, uh, uh, in, and in social media, uh, kind of centered around, uh, staying home, uh, encouraging folks to stay home. Uh, you'll begin to see, uh, banners placed around town. Um, and we'll be placing our, those electronic, uh, traffic-type signs. You, you see those portable signs on, on trailers. Uh, they're called changeable message signs. We'll be posting those around town, uh, with messages and messaging to encourage folks to, uh, to stay home. Um, so you'll begin to see that in the community. Uh, the city's electronic bulletin boards, the one at the Community Center, uh, the one on Pacheco, uh, will also, also do now have, uh, COVID-19-related messaging. Um, and I just heard, uh, just a few minutes ago, uh, that the large bulletin board, or billboard, I'm sorry, uh, at the, at the end of town, um, will start, uh, displaying COVID-19 messaging as well. So, uh, we're really, uh, uh, working hard to push out messaging, uh, to encourage folks to stay home, uh, to begin to flat, to flatten that curve, um, like, uh, the public health, uh, professionals are recommending. Um, let's see, what else? So, as of, I believe, yesterday, or the latest information I've seen, there are, uh, ten confirmed cases in Merced County. Uh, the Public Health, uh, Officer is beginning to provide a little bit more information on, on the cases, a little bit more demographic information, but, uh, still not, uh, because of privacy issues, uh, not providing, uh, a whole lot of detailed information on, on cases. Uh, the best, and the, the source, or the best place to find that information is on the Merced County, uh, website. Uh, the numbers they are providing, uh, do show that there are seven cases on the east side of Merced County um, and three cases on the west side of the county. Um, let's see. Uh, so just, just finally, the, the, really, the, uh, probably the best place to go for information at this point uh, is the county website, uh, countyofmerced.com forward slash coronavirus. Uh, the PD's Facebook page, um, is a great source for information as well. Uh, we're, we're posting regularly there, so I would encourage folks to, uh, go for information there. Uh, we are certainly working hard to try and provide, uh, local information to folks on that website. Uh, I know our PIO is also working, um, at least on a local video that we'll be posting soon. Um, and the county is also working on some video pieces as well, uh, that should be going out, uh, in the near future. Um, so I think that's all I have tonight, Mayor, regarding COVID. I will say, uh, the staff is spending a significant amount of time, um, uh, on this effort, um, and, and just, uh, working hard to, to do the best we can for the community. So, um, with that, Mayor, I think that's, that's my report.
Thank you, Alex. That was really in-depth. And, uh, just to, to add to this, uh, you know, we're, we're really fortunate to have hospital administration, school administration, and the city, the three entities that we need to survive in this community, all working together and working closely on a friendly relationship. Thank you, Alex.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go on to item 10, report, uh, report update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, and Measure V Committee. Well, the only thing I have to report is, last week, the California Transportation Commission approved the, uh, the STIF funding of $29 million for the construction of AME Phase B and the language establishing Pioneer Road as the next priority project. And so that's really important news because the California Transportation Commission now recognizes, uh, uh, Pioneer as a viable option. And, and that is absolutely phenomenal. So, um, we, uh, we need to keep pushing forward because Los Banos, when this is all said and done, we need to keep pushing forward for the betterment of Los Banos and for traffic flow. And so, uh, I would, uh, ask the council that at, at, at a later date, we need to start talking to, uh, the County of Merced because they provided $15 million for the construction of AME. And, uh, remind you that the, uh, uh, the Pioneer Road has county portions. And so we should be asking for money, uh, to make sure they set aside that money in their Measure V, uh, money in years to come. So that's all I have tonight, and we can bring that back, uh, later on. So, uh, I will be contacting Scott Silveira. Uh, he already knows this information, but I will be contacting our supervisor to make sure that we get our, uh, uh, our, our requirements in, in order to qualify for some county money. So with that, I'm going to go on to item 11, City Council Member Reports. And tonight, we're going to start with Mr. Fariah. Would you go ahead? Mr. Fariah, any update? Any, any council member report?
Oh, sorry, I, I had, I thought I had it on, it was on. Um, the, uh, yeah, just stay home and stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fariah, you also. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I, I want to take the time to acknowledge our healthcare workers working in our stores, servicing the public, and just thank them for the work that they are doing. Um, and also, um, uh, yeah, everyone, please stay safe. Thank you very much, Mayor.
And thank you for that comment, Mrs. Santos. Let's go on to Mr. Jones.
Hi, Mayor, uh, no report.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd also like to echo, um, Mrs. Santos, uh, thanks to our medical staff, not just in Los Banos, but throughout the United States. They are working tireless hours to save lives. Um, and if, this is a, this is a pandemic throughout the world that we have never seen in our lifetime. So I want to give them a lot of thanks and praise for what they do to save lives and how they put their, their lives at jeopardy to help others, to the first responders everywhere in Los Banos and throughout the United States who are helping people. Thank you for what you do. And also, um, I want to thank, uh, the businesses that are still open to provide, uh, takeout meals for people and shopping for the public, and especially hours that are set aside for our seniors. Um, it's, it's super important for us to remember the governor's, uh, orders to stay, uh, shelter in place, which means stay in your home unless you have a reason to go out, which would be shopping for your groceries, going to a pharmacy, uh, putting gas in your car, uh, basic needs to keep your life going. Um, but there is, um, one concern, uh, that I do have, and I know that we, we have closed our parks and, uh, because there, you know, we don't want people to, uh, have that contact, uh, on, on the slides, children, uh, to be able to possibly pass on this particular virus that's going on. But the one thing that, uh, again, I have concern about is the shopping carts at our, um, grocery businesses, any, any business that's open that has a shopping cart. I have, I have never, and, and maybe it's just because I haven't observed it, but I've never seen these carts, uh, being washed and taken care of on a regular basis. And our city staff often, uh, goes around the city and picks up carts that are being taken away from the businesses and returns them back to those particular businesses. But at this, you know, at this time, I think that's an effort where the city needs to work with these businesses to step up, uh, requiring them to wash the carts. Now, we can say that once they're washed and somebody touches them, that they're dirty again. But if they've never been washed and they're just out there with all this dirt and filth in them, a good washing at least once a month will help. And most stores at this point are handing out, um, uh, disinfectant wipes for people to wipe the handles down and such. But people still put their children inside those carts in the seating area. And, you know, I think a, as a city, this is an area where we can step up our, our, um, help to the, the citizens of Los Banos to give that little bit of extra protection. At least when they're putting their groceries inside the container portion of the, um, uh, shopping cart, uh, we would have eliminated the, the dirt that's in there and that's accumulated from year after year after year. So I'm, I'm asking the council, um, and I, you know, I'm going to ask our, our city attorney also, is there any way that we can, if the council approves, uh, quickly move a ordinance forward to, um, have this process done so that these carts are washed in, in a regular basis in our city, especially during this time of the COVID virus?
Um, why don't we go to our city attorney first and have him respond, and if Mr. Vaughn needs to?
Yeah.
Okay?
So, uh...
Yeah.
Yes, I'll respond briefly, but we need to be careful about what we're talking about during this point in the agenda. But there has been staff conversation on invoking that as part of our, uh, emergency proclamation. So I don't believe it needs an ordinance at this point in time. this point in time, uh, during the emergency, so we're looking at ways that we can roll that out. And I would suggest, uh, we, it's not fully vetted yet, uh, just in the discussion stage, so I would suggest that, uh, you contact the city manager who's been, uh, very much involved in those types of discussions.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that we're not sitting on this for weeks and weeks, uh, because it's important that this process, process moves forward, so since we have mostly all of the staff that would be involved in the meetings with the city manager to make this decision, uh, let's try to get this out, you know, in an emergency situation and, um, help our community, um, have another form of protection against this COVID virus. And, um, with that, Mayor, I just ask that everybody be safe and be mindful again of the orders and social distancing and shelter in place, and be safe, and, um, we're, we're gonna get through this. We just have to keep safe and remember that if we do the things that we're asked to do, we will overcome because this country is a strong country, and we as Los Banos are strong people, and we're gonna make it through this virus that we have facing us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, uh, thank you, Deborah, very much. And Alex, did you wish to comment on anything else, uh, said, before I go on to my report?
Uh, no, Mayor. I th- I don't, I don't think so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, I, I don't wanna go through everything that everyone else has stated because everyone is a hundred percent right, uh, in what they're doing. Please, shelter in place, that's all I can tell you, shelter in place. Go out only when necessary. This is not a time to be visiting relatives, friends, uh, grandparents, people who are susceptible to this virus. Please, stay in place and do only what you need to do. Um, uh, with that, I would like to, to thank our, our city manager, uh, Alex Terazas, uh, for attending tonight, also, uh, Director Maloney, uh, uh, Stacy Elms, Community and Economic Development Director, uh, Commander Reyna, thank you, uh, Mason Hurley, Fire Chief, thank you, Bill Vaughn, our city attorney, thank you, Sonia Williams, thank you, and Mark Patian, thank you all for attending, uh, this evening and, and being part of this. We're all trying to stay safe, and that's why we're doing as much calling as possible and to get the information out to the public. I will tell you that we are very fortunate to have the hospital and the hospital staff that we have. Uh, if you drive by, don't get upset with all the circumstance that are out there. That is because they are preparing, they are preparing for, uh, uh, yeah, anything that may happen, and it's better to over-prepare than be under-prepared. So, uh, Philip Yu, our hospital administrator, in fact, uh, right now, he is on a, a countywide conference, uh, speaking tonight with Sanoslos County and Merced County, uh, for the, on the COVID-nineteen virus. So I will tell you that our staff is, there, the hospital staff is preparing, many dedicated men and women here who are helping to make sure that this does not spread, but nothing, nothing that they do will be enough if you do not shelter in place, and that's all I can tell you. Please, please, please limit your contact. So with that, if there are any other comments, is there anyone who wishes to make any other Not seeing or hearing anyone. Uh, Director Maloney, we are going to adjourn at five-thirty-four. Meeting is now adjourned for this city council meeting. Thank you all for attending.